Good afternoon. The March 5th meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum? Here.
Councilmember Lavell?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday? Mayor Protem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Present.
Let the record reflect, all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council will meet in closed session on two items. CS1, conference with real property negotiator. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property at 42670 Juniper Street, APNs 906250018, 906250019, and 906670004. The city's real property negotiators, the city manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney will seek direction from the City Council regarding the price and terms for this property. CS2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel regarding one litigation case to which the city is a party. The title of such litigation is as follows, Proco v Marietta, Case Number 522CV00005, JGBSP, District Court of the Southern District of California.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we are going to recess to closed session and will reconvene at 5:00 PM for the workshop. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 5th workshop of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, would you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Lavell?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Protem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Present. Thank you so much.
Let the record reflect that all members are present, please.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our workshop, the Hillside Updates Ordinance Overview, and staff, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Good evening, councilmembers. Can we have the PowerPoint, please, Madam City Clerk? Appreciate that. So just to kind of remind us how we got here, so in 2022, at the City Council's annual priority goals, the City Council requested that staff address some hillside development standard inconsistencies, and so when they were initially adopted in 1997, they were applied on a citywide basis, and there were some issues with that approach. And so staff, over the course of the last couple of years, we've been asked to address or correct inconsistent standards that may challenge the interpretations of the current standards. So for example, we had hillside standards and general height standards that were kind of overly complicated and not consistently applied over the years, and then there was an inability to streamline project reviews that are consistent with General Plan Development Code, and specifically, the city, the current code uses a formula that requires a lot of intensive engineering work, which is really impractical for a typical homeowner to try and apply. And so one of the recommendations that Mr. Tracy will talk about is how we've converted that process, gotten away from the formula, and then replacing that with the Hillside Overlay Map, which we'll see in the presentation. So the overall goal of staff's approach is to really provide concise and accurate direction, not only for staff, but also for property owners and developers, and we're just trying to keep it simple. So we haven't really made, just as an overview, we haven't really made any wholesale changes. We're looking at the code, you know, from 1997, and, you know, looking at pieces that really don't, shouldn't be in the code anymore because of changes in technology like geographic information systems or GIS, and how we've practiced development in hillside areas and how to make that cleaner for everyone involved. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris, who will give you an overview of everything that we've, that we're recommending. So thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. On your screen here for historical context, this is the overlay map that's been utilized for the past 25 years plus. It was never officially adopted. We don't, you know, that's why we're recommending that we move in a direction where we have something that is codified, just for clarity moving forward. For context, the city's existing hillside development standards are contained in Chapter 1624 of the Development Code, and that was adopted back in 1997. For context here, this is the proposed hillside overlay map. The red squares represent MSHCP criteria cells identified by the Riverside Conservation Authority, also known as RCA. This is just a side-by-side comparison of what's currently utilized versus what's proposed. Just some key takeaways from the mapping exercise update that was directed by council to staff to provide under this presentation today. We have 319 parcels that are developed and are privately owned. We have 179 parcels that are developed privately owned and are within a cell. We have 51 parcels that are in the study area undeveloped and privately owned. 30 parcels are undeveloped privately owned and within a cell. 25 parcels are undeveloped owned by the RCA. We have one parcel that is undeveloped privately owned and is under a different entity for conservation. Just pivoting here, just some takeaways on the ridgeline areas from the mapping exercise updates. We have 22 parcels that are developed and privately owned. 21 parcels are developed privately owned within a cell. We have eight parcels that are undeveloped and privately owned, and we have seven parcels undeveloped privately owned and within a cell. On your screen here is the ridgeline reference area. It's in purple within that orange overlay. So just for reference, we kind of touched on this at the last workshop, but there is a number of goals and policies from the city's general plan that implement standards for development in hills and ridges. Just really quick, we have goal CSV5, which maintains that hills and ridges are protected for their environmental aesthetic values to promote compliance with hillside development guidelines and maintain the natural character and environmental and aesthetic values of sloped areas. We have an implementing policy, CSV5.1, promoting compliance with hillside development standards to maintain natural character of the environment and aesthetic values. And also, as noted on page 84 of the Conservation Element, the hogbacks are a prominent visual feature in Marietta. Just similar to the other mapping, with the mapping exercise update, this is just a zoomed-in version of that prominent ridgeline area, kind of, and the ownership status, this was desired from the last council workshop to kind of talk through that, and this is the Los Alamos Hills area. As I mentioned, both the general plan and municipal code address the preservation of ridgeline-related visual resources, covering both natural and man-made areas. And that policy, CSV, conservation policy, CSV5.1 speaks to maintain the aesthetic values of sloped area for which a ridgeline would be a component there. And continuing with this, we have Land Use Policy 22, which calls for the preservation of both natural and visual resources. LU22.2 speaks to encouraging new construction and landscape design that utilizes grading techniques to mimic natural terrain, and I'm going to provide some examples later in this presentation, which kind of illustrate that for you. And finally, as described within the Development Code, it does call for the preservation of significant visual features. One can make the case that ridgeline represents this type of feature. This includes, "Structures shall not visually impair ridgeline silhouettes within the setback criteria. Manufactured cut-and-fill slopes with prominent visible slopes need to be designed in a manner to emulate natural conditions." Next on your screen here, just an overview, high-level updates, that's part of the proposed ordinance framework. Real quick, we're looking at some updates with our building height. It'd be less restrictive, more flexible in how that's measured compared to what's today. We have some retaining wall updates. I kind of covered that in detail last time, but we just have a change in approach there. Applicability, we have a change in approach. It eliminates uncertainty by replacing a formula, as David mentioned early, applicable to any properties that are greater than 25%. We'd use mapping components for that. Just a definition update there on ridgeline. Clarification of zoning and requirements for hillside developments, we're just adding clarity there. Slope categories in site design is the same thing. With site design, we're going to have updated graphics that will help customers understand how to design their project. Here we have architecture, just some changes in approach, again, on that building height measurement, walls and fences in landscaping, just adding clarity there. Grading, change in approach, requires analysis by a licensed engineer, eliminates ridgeline restrictions for the structure placement, and adds requirements, as we kind of touched on last time, for landscape screening of structures instead, and then just other minor changes with that. Drainage, just adding clarity, and public safety, same thing. Here's current and proposed situational type of exercise. On the left side is kind of a more of a prohibited development bubble, if you will, on a, with the way the code's currently restricted with the preservation of noel tops and that sort of thing, so it's kind of got that situation. The right side would be a more flexible option moving forward where we don't have that restriction. In lieu of that, would be landscaping treatment. And this is kind of some pictures to illustrate that. Kind of getting towards the end of this, we have our hillside development guidelines, which is adding clarity in the section, incorporating references, and other non-substantive text changes. We'll have a new section on exceptions. This identifies work or activities not subject to the proposed standards, and then we'll have some updates with our landscaping standards as well. As I mentioned earlier, this is a grading project over in the Orange Crest area, Riverside. This is a semi-custom home development. As you can see here, this is kind of utilizing more of a natural slope condition to maintain those current undulating hills. This is the post-development condition. As you can see, they continue to utilize the natural and contour grades to kind of emulate that hillside that was there before, kind of working with the land and the placement of the structures. On your screen here is that same development, a little bit up the hill from there. The middle portion is some preserved rock outcroppings in some biological-sensitive areas. We do have these standards currently in place, you know, for preservation when we're evaluating projects. Again, here, they're kind of working with the terrain. They have gentle slopes and kind of replicating what's, you know, you would see in the natural environment. So with that, staff recommends the following. Receive a presentation, discuss the ordinance overview, and provide direction on policy options under the proposed ordinance framework. And second, receive public comments, and staff would be happy to walk through any specifics as you desire, and thank you for the opportunity for this presentation.
Okay, let's bring it back for council questions. Any questions from my colleagues? Okay. So there's been a request to hear from the public first, so Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kasten Klein?
Sure. Can you pull up the PowerPoint?
Hey, could you put the first slide up, please, for the...
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to thank staff and Christopher very much for the work they've done on this, and I spoke to Chris on Friday, and we've had, this issue has been the subject of several conversations in the Development Advisory Group. Also, before David's time, this actually dates back to 2019 with a project that I represented and the inconsistency. So I've got two dissenting positions on this. And maybe it's not the first one here, but one of these slides, it talked about, right there, the middle one. City's hillside standards have been general height standards, are overly complicated and not consistently applied. Therefore, one position is do away with the whole thing. And why do I say that? Because in the general plan, initially, it was to preserve hillsides and ridgelines. That can't be achieved any longer. Why? Because it hasn't been consistently applied. We can go as early back as the hotel up on the hill, the Holiday Inn Express, right? Shouldn't have been built if this would have been applied. So where's the equitability in that? There have been numerous developers, property owners, homeowners, who have had the benefit of the inconsistent application of this goal. That's one position that I have. The other, if we're not going to do that, specific plans are not addressed on the exhibit. And how we got here was, the original map was not codified, and so people didn't know to go to the ordinance if it wasn't on the map. People thought, including staff, if you looked at the map and the parcel wasn't on the map, oh, then the ordinance doesn't apply. So we need to show, and I had this conversation with Christopher, so I'm not blindsiding anybody. We need to show specific plans hatched that may be subject to the hillside ordinance, but simply because a parcel is on that exhibit doesn't mean that they're bound by the hillside ordinance. Then we need to refer to the actual ordinance to see whether or not the parcel exists, and I'll wrap up real quick here. The 25%, how we got here. Previously, how we measured or determined the slope, it was indefensible because contours, topographical contours are inconsistent. There's no way to measure the rise and fall consistently, and when we did, and Bob can testify to this, because we went through this on my project, was we didn't know how many decimal points to go out to calculate to get to the percentage. And then the attorney asked Bob, what was the industry standard for civil engineering? And there isn't one. So it's indefensible. So even at 25%, how do we calculate that? What decimal point do we take it out to? And how do you calculate it accurately? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sheri Monroe, Forum Engineering and Development. Happy Election Day. I love the direction this is going. I agree with Kasten. I don't think we're quite there yet. Tonight, I kind of wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about a section that was added, and thank you, staff, for acknowledging and adding a section on GeoGrids. They are not exactly walls. They're not a wall. They're not a reinforced slope. They're a hybrid. They're currently living in the F2 section of the retaining wall guidelines. My hope and dream would be to roll that, move that into the exemptions as opposed to the wall section, because they're not, they're not walls. They don't have footings. It's physically impossible engineering-wise to stagger them because it degrades the integrity of the structure of the wall. They're a whole different kind of animal, so, you guys know I hate this. In addition to that, they're community-wise, a lot friendlier. They're graffiti-resistant because most of them are planted. They're appealing. They're pretty. I'd like to see an incentive from you guys to utilize these more in engineering design practices on my end, because I love them. They're guaranteed for 100 years by the manufacturer. I mean, these are really solid structures that are not a wall and not a slope. So I'm happy to at least see it incorporated. This was missing any reference to that in the original ordinance and in a couple of the updates, but it's in there now. If we can move it to exemptions, it'll certainly encourage people to use it. So that was my big thing today, so, thank you.
Mr. Allen Long?
Can you put up the slide that shows the properties affected? I think there were 21 properties on the ridgeline. Right, 22. No, go back to the numbers. One more. There we go, 22 parcels. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to first start off with commending staff. They have worked tremendously, and it's evident. They've listened, they've added some language and deleted some language that I'm very thankful for, and agree. I agree with the last two speakers, both Sheri and Kasten as well. But I'm going to hit on that because you really have given them mission impossible here, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. They're trying to make lemonade, but this ordinance stems from our general plan, and the language in that general plan hasn't changed since we've incorporated as a city. And we're talking about ridgelines today, but pause with me a moment, because in the same sentence, and in the same context, it talks about the valley floors and the rolling hills and the view shed. Get this, it really says this, from people passing through on the 15 freeway and the 215. It was a view shed. I don't see a map for rolling hills off the 215 or 15. I don't see a map for the valley floor off the 215 and the 15. Why? We didn't apply it. When I say "we," I mean the city before you, before me. They didn't apply it. They built on it. Kasten gave a good example of recently, a hotel built 40 feet above the freeway. Shouldn't have been done according to the code, but it was. So we're trying to create an ordinance that stems from the general plan that really is obsolete. I go back to my request at the last general plan update to fix that, but it wasn't, because I think, as I said, I think it's going to cause some problems with development, and here we are. So why now? Why take a map, a 70-page ordinance you've asked these people, again, to fix, to apply today for a general plan that's obsolete, or a section of general plan that's obsolete, and to fix it? That's mission impossible. It really is mission impossible for them. Again, I like the language, but when you try to take a map now and apply, this is the other part, it's a citywide ordinance currently. There's no question about it. It says throughout hills, ridgelines, throughout the city. But because we didn't follow the general plan, and we didn't apply the ordinance, and sometimes we did, sometimes we didn't, now we're trying to create a map that affects 22 parcels, some of which are already developed. I'm already developed. My property's developed. I got a mid-slope home, mid-slope home that can be seen. So please consider that. I would say, keep it a citywide ordinance, keep the language they proposed, they did a great job, but ditch the map. Why? Right now, there is a boundary. It's citywide. It's the city boundaries is where the boundaries approach. One last thing, if I may, Mayor, on the walls. The other part of this doesn't really make sense, and I think it's unintended. In your ordinance, as it's proposed, if I'm an apartment complex, I can build a wall over six feet tall, where a lot of people will see it, because it's in the city. If I'm in the rural residential in the hillside, I can't build a wall over six feet, but nobody would see it. I can think of some roadways that have cliffs that were cut originally for the roadways that really, to do it right, they should put a retaining wall there because it's just a straight cliff, but this ordinance precludes them from doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Dan Long?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to echo all the comments I've heard today. Staff has been fantastic, keeping us abreast of the situation. I did participate in some of the workshops and want to echo that it's going in the right direction. I still think we have a little further to go. I don't have a whole lot to add because I don't want to repeat what the previous speakers have spoken to. There are a couple of notes in here I would like to add. Don't want to get too much in the weeds, but I would like to maybe meet with staff afterwards and coordinate some things, but some comments I would like to highlight. I know in the ordinance here, it refers to relying on GIS in the computer systems. I love technology. I use it every day. I am a developer myself, but at the same time, there are errors in the computer system. There's glitches. I'd like to see some flexibilities to where you can actually have surveys, provided some flexibility, so you can show, no, the GIS is wrong, here's the survey data that proves other. That's one point. The other point I want to mention is, my brother mentioned the key viewpoints from the freeways. It's really very vague right now. It just says viewpoints from the freeways. That can be from anywhere. Years ago, you should be able to drive up and down the 215 and 15 freeway, and you can see Santa Rosa Plateau, the hogbacks. Now you might see, you know, picture peekaboo views. So kind of wondering why all of a sudden it's important when you can't really see the prominent ridgelines and the hillsides like you did before. One other point I'll bring up, it's kind of related to what I just heard about the walls. I certainly agree with six feet, and the hillside is very restrictive, but more so, one of the things I don't like in here, and it's probably too far in the weeds, and I can work with staff on it, but I'll have to find the section, but it talks about a six-foot max retaining wall, and if you look at an exhibit, it's measuring it from the bottom of the footing. Well, I'll let you refer to Sheri and the city engineer, but when you get on a hillside and you have a footing, the more of a hillside you have, that deeper footing becomes. So if you have a two- or three-foot footing, and you measure from the bottom, you're left with a two-foot wall. When you're in the hillside area, that doesn't do much, so I'd really encourage staff to look at some of the cleanup items. I'm happy to meet with them and go with those items as well. Thank you.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor?
Okay. Let's bring it back for discussion, and Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions. How is the 25% calculated? I realize we're getting rid of the formula, but can you tell me how that 25% is calculated? And by the way, thank you, staff, for this amazing report. Thanks for moving forward with this. Since I've been on council, I've heard of the horror of the hillside ordinance, so it's nice to see it getting cleaned up.
Yeah, we're happy to try to do that. So the way that GIS looks at slope is, it kind of creates a, I'll just call it a web, and it looks at the elevation information that's available, and it kind of creates what's called a triangular irregular network. So it looks at the points, the heights of those points, and it kind of calculates distances between those points, and based on the math, you know, it calculates what the slope is. So it's not a, you know, Mr. Long alluded to errors. I don't know that I would call it or characterize it as an error, but it's not a, it may not be as accurate as the formula, you know, for example, but, you know, there are other problems, you know, with the formula. So at least with using a GIS approach, it's shifting off of, you know, measuring individual contour lines, which is what the current formula requires us to do, and so it instead, you know, uses, I'll just call it an average, to calculate, you know, what those slopes are. And so with our, you know, particular map, you know, we had the height information or the elevation information of these different points kind of across the city, and just by going through, I don't, I couldn't tell you how many calculations, but it figured out that, you know, within certain points of the properties depicted on the hillside overlay map, that those areas were going to be 25% or greater.
Thank you. Would it also... Thank you. Would it also be wise to use the flexibility of possibly including in there the survey, like Mr. Long stated?
Well, I think, you know, the problem with the survey, you know, is, you know, that if we all, you know, remember from school, you know, a slope is rise over run, right? It only looks at two points. The properties that were, you know, properties don't just have two points from, you know, the top of a property down to the bottom of a property. So it kind of masks, in my opinion, you know, having been a practitioner for, you know, 30 years, 30-plus years now, using this type of a formula, you know, the goal, you know, is to properly identify what's greater than 25%. And so you're always going to have some margin of error, whether it's the rise over run formula, or you're using the contour. You know, Kasten referred to, you know, how many decimal points that you go out, you know, to something is, you know, with our formula, 25%, if we get to, you know, 24.9 is, do you round up? So there's a variety of issues with each of the ways that you can calculate slope. But at least with, you know, with our GIS, recommended GIS approach, it's more factual based, I'll say. You know, having a requirement for property owners to do surveys can be expensive. And one of the goals of trying to shift to a GIS-based approach is, we are already, we're providing the information. So it takes the mystery out of the owner having to, you know, spend money on a survey.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Also, talking about the live walls, and can that also be moved to be able to be utilized?
The, I'm sorry, the what walls?
The GeoGrid.
Oh, the GeoGrid walls, yeah. Could you put the presentation up?
I call them the live walls, because they're usually planted and they're pretty, so.
Yeah, I can, here, I'll have a picture of that. Let's see. So the right side there, but I think I got another one that's a little better. Sorry. Yeah, so they're like, this would be like a crib wall, keys. Actually, that first one was best. I'm sorry. Go back there. On the right side. So those are your GeoGrid walls with vines. I think we could move that to the exception section as an option if it doesn't, I guess, engineering-wise, it doesn't, if it's not feasible. Because I know sometimes you have to have a fabric on top to pull it back. And that area can't be disturbed, I guess, with like any sort of like a footing, but there is that, or like a pool or something like that. So that's something we could look at, maybe moving, you know, outside of that one section that was referenced by the speaker.
Right, thank you. And just a couple more questions. I agree that, you know, clarity and consistency and what has gone in the past, and we need to be as clear and concise as possible. So I think that the viewpoint piece is vague. And I find that maybe that we need to have consistency with the general plan. And if there's a specific plan, could you tell me, is the specific plan override our general plan?
It's supposed to be consistent with the general plan. And so the, I think, part of the difficulty that we, that staff had in, you know, looking at how the hillside ordinance could apply to specific plans, is that when the specific plans were approved, there should have already been a consistency analysis that happened where staff or the council would have determined the way that the project was being designed was consistent. So it's not, I think it would, there is the potential for more inconsistencies to be created if we put the overlay, if we include the specific plans in the overlay areas. There's just not a lot of information, you know, for us to kind of go back and try to unwind how specific plan properties were developed and figure out if they apply or not. Each specific plan is going to have, it's like a miniature zoning ordinance. They're going to have their own standards. And so again, the assumption is that there was consideration for how the specific plan and the properties were being developed with respect to the hillside regulations. But we can't go back and second guess what happened.
All right. And one more question. The speaker spoke about a six-foot wall with a four-foot foundation or footing. And it does seem like a six-foot wall on a hillside doesn't seem like much.
It's currently what's in place today, believe it or not. So that was just a carryover. But we can definitely explore, based on the footing comment, because you, you know, that is, that's a good, you know, thing to take a look at. Because you might have a 12-inch or 18-inch footing. Let me see, I might have a diagram of that. But... Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm getting dizzy.
Yeah, I apologize. There's a lot of, a lot of information here. No, it's a good point. We can definitely take a look at that. It may be a higher threshold there that would work.
All right. I don't mean to be a question hog for the rest of my colleagues. I'm sorry. But one last question. Okay. I forgot my last question. Oh, couldn't we just remove the ridge line? Can we just get rid of that?
You could. There's information in the general plan that talks about what a prominent ridge line is. And there's enough descriptions within the general plan that allows us to, you know, continue to implement the general plan without the map. So it can be removed, we think.
Thank you so much for answering all my questions. I greatly appreciate all your help and understanding this.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff. I know that this has been a lot of work. And to an extent, I agree with one of the speakers. It says it's mission impossible. It's certainly mission difficult, 100%. Can you go back to that slide that, one of the first map slides, was a dotted line kind of in the middle of the map? I was curious what that represented. Go back one. See that dotted line that comes straight down the middle?
Oh, I think that was the old city boundary.
Okay.
Before we annexed the golf course in, yeah, Hot Springs.
So Councilmember Warren's outside the city now. Okay, just curious. All those in favor? And in your presentation, it talked about parcels that were privately owned and then privately owned that were within a cell. Why is that distinction important?
Well, if it's within a criteria cell, depending on the type of development they're proposing, it would require a joint project review with the RCA. So it's kind of a more intensive biological analysis. And going through that process with them to get to how the impacts would be mitigated, depending on the scope of development. There are some exceptions for single-family properties, but we have to take, we'd also have to kind of take a look at what the baseline is there, too.
Yeah, because I'm familiar with JPRs and I understand that. But I don't know, I don't know how that equated to our hillside ordinance. If they have to go through that JPR, does that give us the opportunity to then apply it there? I mean, it should still apply to those properties regardless, right?
Yeah, it still would apply regardless. It's part of the general plan, goals and policies. So that's, you know, kind of a big picture type of item.
And also with the properties that are owned by RCA, it should apply to those as well. Because while in our foreseeable future, we don't see anything happening to RCA and that Endangered Species Act. And, but who knows what's going to happen 50 years from now? And all of a sudden, you know, we get a whole new mindset at the federal level. And they said, yeah, we don't need to care about endangered species anymore, and we're going to sell off all this property. Shouldn't it apply to those as well? Just in case?
Yeah, it would. And I agree. I mean, if there's ever, say, they might do an exchange for one property versus another one, where there's more sensitive species, it's got higher value, maybe that might be something down the line. So, you know, that's a valid point.
Okay. Yeah, I certainly wouldn't exclude those. And then you already addressed the specific plan comment from my colleague. Thank you for that. And talking about the calculated slope for a second. If I understand the intent of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent was is to give certainty to parcel owners. And I can speak from my own development. One of the comments that I got back from planning was, well, you need to do this survey to prove that you're not in the hillside ordinance area. I'm like, well, come look at my property. I can, you can see that it's not without doing a survey. So the intent was to provide certainty. To the speaker's comment, though, is, let's say my parcel was mislabeled to be in the hillside ordinance. And I understand, Mr. John Tronc, so you don't think that's probably possible. But if property owner came forward and said, hey, I shouldn't be in this, not because it's 24.9, but because it's significantly different for some reason, the GIS just happened to be mistaken. Shouldn't there be a method in there to have it addressed?
Thank you for the question. So in my opinion, the only way to do that is to leave that slope formula there. But I would identify it as an alternative. At least you would give the property owner the ability to have another option to provide the information that we'd be looking for.
Well, since I'm not the expert, I'm going to leave that to you guys to think about what would make the most sense to give a property owner kind of a peel process, so to speak. But I think I agree with you. Giving that certainty to say, I'm in or I'm out, would be certainly beneficial to everybody that owns property in those areas. And last two things, I guess, more into. Can we go back to the slide that shows the prominent ridge lines?
Another one?
Okay, so it's the purple areas, correct?
That is correct.
So when I, I happened to be at Target the other day, which is up there by that little tiny purple area in the middle top. But there's a whole ridge line that's really that orange area. That's all a ridge line through there. Why is that not identified?
There, those areas are part of specific plans. So you have Gru Ranch.
So it's just not shown on this map that that has been taken out because it's in a specific plan?
Specific plan has its own criteria, you know, with that consistency analysis.
And as Mr. John Tronc, who said, they were supposed to have addressed that when they did the specific plan. But those specific plans are done and behind us now.
Yeah, I would also add, there's usually an EIR that goes along with those types of documents. And there's a whole section on visual resources in there and a robust kind of analysis with that.
Perfect. And last couple of things. The comments about the general plan, being inconsistent with where we are today. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I will say that, you know, as development has progressed, as we've built out, you know, over time, there should have been, with every discretionary permit that was issued. So development plans, things that would go to the planning commission for approval, for example, or even the city council. There should have been a check-in to determine that whether or not a project was consistent with the general plan, just like the specific plans we were talking about. And so the, you know, the ordinance, for example, prohibited, prohibits currently, you know, development on ridge lines. And it has the written description of the hogbacks and the area on Los Alamos. And so if the general plan is focusing on those areas, you know, even though a property is developed, I guess, I guess we could debate on whether or not, you know, something is significant, even after development occurs on the property. But I think what happens is, and Chris alluded to it in his comments about the robust analysis, the visual resource doesn't go away. It might have been altered, because now you've got a structure, you know, sitting on top of it. Does that mean it's inconsistent with the general plan? That, I think, from staff's standpoint, you know, we would say no. It just means the visual context has been changed. And when we go through an environmental review process, the SEQA, the California Round Equality Act, it looks at the existing conditions. What's on the ground today? There are, in, you know, for the Los Alamos Hills area and the hogbacks, there are one- and two-story residential structures. And if, as development moves forward, up in that area, and we know there aren't that many parcels, you know, that are left, the environmental context, you know, would be that, you know, a development of another one- or two-story structure probably isn't going to change the environmental context much. You're going to see another structure. But with the ordinance, we're recommending that you adopt landscaping design standards to try to soften that visual effect. So there's not a hard line that, once you have something, you know, built on top of, in this, in this case, we're talking about ridge lines, that, you know, the entire ridge line is no longer significant. It's just that the character has changed.
Right. And then my last question. So this ordinance, in your opinion, provides more clarity than what we have in the existing ordinance for certainty for parcel owners. And it is less restrictive in a lot of sense as far as what can be developed than what's in the current ordinance. And does not preclude development on ridge lines with the caveat about the landscape addition?
So I will say generally, yes. So there are things that we would normally do, like at a project development level, that we would have to review. We don't have all that information. You know, for example, the new fire code or the new fire map is coming out soon. We don't know how that's going to affect developability of parcels that could have some effect on whether or not parcels, the extent that they could be developed. There would still be development in that area. It could look different than what we're anticipating. The developable areas could get smaller, because maybe the fuel modification zones are going to expand.
But not because of this ordinance?
Not because of this ordinance. It would be because of some other outside code that we don't have any control over.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. And next is Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. To the, I think Councilwoman DeForest touched on it. But if the general plans somewhat spoke to this issue and maybe, you know, allowed the need for an ordinance to be thought about, how difficult would it be to abandon the ordinance or the overlay map part of this discussion to just address it with a general plan amendment? And be, if we were to amend it, be very thoughtful about how it didn't work the first time and the language they used.
Well, I don't, as I stated earlier, I don't think abandoning the ridge line map, you know, is going to have any material effect on the general plan because of what's written in there today. But if you're, so are you asking about amending the general plan?
I'm not. I'm asking if the general plan was trying to speak to protect the ridge lines and the valley floors and the things of that nature, but yet all the development still happened in the years that were behind us, what could it have said to accomplish the ordinance's goal that the map is trying to do?
I think it would have been more explicit about development on ridge lines. And so, for example, it could have had the language in the general plan that said, no development on ridge lines within 50 feet, you know, of the highest point or 150 feet. So it would have had that certainty, which is not characteristic of a general plan. You usually want some flexibility there. So it would have been more explicit about where development was allowed.
Yeah.
And we looked at one particular development that was proposed in the hogbacks. And there was a lot of debate about whether or not that development complied with the general plan standards. This was a 2008 project that would have used more or less the current general plan standards that we have. So staff... So staff evaluated, and the planning commission, or the city council, rather, you know, confirmed how to achieve consistency. And that was with, I think, language that was general. So there was flexibility there, even though there were some, there was some question about, you know, whether or not the project complied with the general plan standards. But because that flexibility was there, it gave, it provided a window for the city to consider consistency. If there was more explicit language in the general plan, I don't think that project would have been possible.
And so the developments that have happened, it may have slipped through the cracks, for lack of better words. I mean, I remember moving here when Vista High School wasn't there. I mean, that's, I believe that was a pretty significant hill there, and then obviously to the north of Accosco, when there was some, I don't know the grading of it, but those things probably would have been subject to that discussion, too, I would imagine.
Well, school districts don't have to comply with our standards, so they get it out. Maybe that's a bad example. But like I said, whenever we go through a development project, there has to be consistency analysis that gets applied. And, you know, you hope that, you know, more often than not, it's correct. But ultimately, the city council, you know, passed, and future will get to interpret the general plan.
I'd like to, I like the idea of keeping it as simple as possible. Creating a map on a software that's not absolutely foolproof, or there will be no discrepancies, that concerns me a little bit, just not, there's not a for sure answer that that map, the GIS software is going to be the absolute answer all the time. I like the idea of maybe two options, so you have the tool, giving you an idea if you're just a landowner, but if you want to challenge it, or you don't agree with the GIS findings, you can hire a surveyor, and you can get that done on your own and contest that.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
And Councilmember Warren, and also Councilmember DeForest that are in the queue. I'm so sorry, but we are going to have to continue this workshop.
Okay.
Because we need to move on to our city council meeting. So Chris and David, thank you so much for your hard work and your presentation, and we are going to continue this to a future meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're going to do a 10-minute break. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The March 5 regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is called to order. Madam City Attorney, please provide a report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on two items. The first one was to confer with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The council was updated, no reportable action. The second item was to confer regarding existing litigation in the matter of Proco versus City of Murrieta pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll for determiner of a quorum, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present. And Madam Mayor, I'd like to reflect for the record that Councilmember Holliday was present during all closed session items, and Mayor Stone recused herself from CS1 due to owning property within 1,000 feet.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Assistant City Manager Ivan Holler, and remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Lyndon Parsons with the Marietta Springs Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Would you please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we bow our heads? Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for your kind watch over our fair city, and we thank you for the heritage of faith and dedication to fairness and justice that established us as a nation, as a state, and as a city, and has given us a government of the people that is guided by the people. Thus, we thank you for these, our public servants, who have dedicated themselves to governing on our behalf, holding as sacred the principles of justice and freedom for all. Please guide them this evening and help them to see the very best way forward for each item under discussion. Please bless them, their families, for their service, as well as our city staff and our police officers and firefighters who daily care for our well-being. Please bless, protect, and hold all of them dear. We also thank you for the wonderful blessing of consecutive years of generous rainfall that our city might better prosper. We lay all of these things before you in the name of Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Parsons. We will move on to presentations. First presentation is French Valley Airport, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Angela Jamison with the county airport, who's the county airport manager, and she's here to provide a presentation.
Good evening. I need glasses or I can't see a thing. My name is Angela Jamison. I am the Riverside County Airports Manager. Riverside County owns and operates five airports throughout the county, and you can see them listed here. I want to show you the extent of just the geography. They go all the way from French Valley all the way out to Blythe, so about 300 miles of airports we manage, including the one closest to you, which is French Valley Airport, which is about 311 of our 7,000 acres that we manage for airport property. We have one runway, 240 hangars, 211 tie-downs. It's a pretty busy airport, as I'm sure all of you have heard, no? All of our airports have a specific flavor, and French Valley is primarily business aviation and flight training. We also have quite a bit of tourism. People come in and do balloon trips or wine country trips, fine restaurants, resorts, and spas, but we have a wide variety of business that occurs at the airport and a lot of jobs as well. I know that you've heard some complaints or some concerns about noise or perhaps low-flying aircraft and constituents that might be concerned about their safety or the safety of flights in the air, and I wanted to address what we can do, what we can't do, what we're going to do, and what we want to do. So first, the airport sponsor. We can tell airplanes where to park all day long, and I do. The county does not have authority over aircraft in flight, taking off or landing. We cannot dictate where or when aircraft fly. In 1958, Congress gave 100% of that control to the FAA. The FAA has guidance, they have rules, and the pilot in command has to follow those rules. If anyone thinks that a pilot is operating in an unsafe manner, they should be reported to the FAA, and the FAA will consider if that was an unsafe action or not. But the skies are federal infrastructure, like a highway would be, and airplanes are allowed to use the skies. What we're trying to do, what we want to do, we're putting in an air traffic control tower, a contract air traffic control tower. The difference between an FAA tower and a contract tower is, we build the tower. The county would build the tower, the FAA would reimburse the staffing of that tower. What that does is give us better separation of traffic and better control of the traffic in and out, so it's increased safety, increased operational efficiency. Almost 50% of the towers in the U.S. are contract towers, and we hope to be one of the next ones in operation. We were accepted into the program in 2022. We have five years to build the tower, so by 2027, and then we apply for FAA to reimburse our costs. And with that, if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to address them, or let me know at another time.
Thank you, Ms. Jamison, for your presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next presentation, it's the Riverside County Arts and Cultural Month. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Mike Franklin with the Riverside County Office of Economic Development.
Thank you so much for attending.
Good evening, Murrieta, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Mike Franklin with Riverside County Office of Economic Development, and we're excited to proclaim March Riverside County Arts and Culture Month. We're thrilled that all 28 cities within the county are supporting this initiative, along with 17 city libraries, 36 county libraries, and over 50 participating locations. Residents can pick up a commemorative expiration pass at any of the participating locations and will receive a stamp at each site that they visit. Additionally, some locations are hosting special events where attendees will be offered engaging activities. For more information on the locations, as well as a schedule of events, please visit rivcoartsandculture.org or scan the QR code that is on the expiration pass, and Murrieta residents can pick those up at the Murrieta Library. We thank Murrieta for your support and your participation in this exciting initiative.
Michael, just one second. On behalf of the City of Murrieta, we are pleased to congratulate the County of Riverside Office of Economic Development on their success in supporting and encouraging local artists and the arts community to elevate the quality of life for residents throughout Riverside County. We join you in your continued pursuit of creating a community that fosters innovation, education, and a dynamic atmosphere by supporting March as a Riverside County Arts and Cultural Month. And we have a certificate of appreciation, so if my colleagues and I would join you down at the front, we will give you your certificate. And then we're going to turn around, we're going to take a quick little picture. All right. One, two, and three. All right, thank you so much. Thank you for having me. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda. We have a motion by Councilmember DeForest, a second by Councilmember Holliday, which
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay, we're going to move on to administrative updates. City manager administration update for the city of, from the city manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcements on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you're interested in voting in today's presidential primary elections, you still have until 8 o'clock. We have ballot drop-offs here at City Hall in our front lobby. We also have them at the library and fire station four, and the city clerk's office would like me to let you know that as of this afternoon, almost 2,000, probably by this point, over 2,000 ballots have been collected here at City Hall. So we've had a very nice turnout. Also, March is Restaurant Month 2024, and in our partnership with the Murrieta Chamber, City of Oldamar, and Explore Murrieta, this is an annual event that we have. If you'd like to participate, all of the information and participating restaurants are on the Chamber website, so we encourage everyone to visit that. And it's a great way to help promote our local businesses and try some good food that maybe you haven't tried before. So our next, our first presentation is going to be by our Fire Chief, Bernie Malloy.
First I have to find the clicker. Good evening, Mayor Stone, Mayor Pro Tem Warren, and Council. I'm excited today to present what Murrieta Fire and Rescue's been up to for the past year. So before you, you have the 2023 Annual Report, hot off the presses. We literally picked it up this morning. And everybody in the audience, you'll have your chance to download it after we get through the presentation, so there is going to be a link. One of the goals of the City of Murrieta is to provide innovative public safety for the residents that live here. I want to show you today what our team has done to do just that. And I'm going to give you an overview. We have the wrong PowerPoint up. Kimberly? We have a different PowerPoint for this presentation? This is for our agenda item. We'll get to that one, I promise.
You're tough.
That's the one. I should have looked up before I started, I could have queued in on that. So I want to show you what our team has done, and this is the entire team, not just the suppression side of the fire department. We do a lot for the community, and we're going to highlight that today. I want to start by talking about our incident responses. This is where we reach out and touch the community every day. This is when somebody calls 911, the service that we deliver. We had 11,628 calls for service this year, and we break that down, 154 fire incidents. And this is broken down, you see 7,000 emergency medical incidents, the number of traffic collisions, good and ten calls, fire alarms, and then weather and other. That's one that we had a lot of this year that we don't usually have, so we thought we would draw some emphasis to that. This is 11,628 times that the doors on the fire station rolled up and we drove out to help the community. And that number was relatively flat from the year prior, we went up by 0.1%, but it is good to see that we're a busy fire department. When we break this down by station, we can see the number of incidents that each station runs. You'll see a number up there, 13,345 unit responses. I want to draw emphasis to that. There is a difference between an incident and a unit response. An incident is when somebody calls 911, something happened at this address. That is one incident. However, that thing that happened at that one address sometimes requires multiple units to respond to that. So if we have a traffic collision on the freeway, a cut and rescue, a fire, we need to send more than one unit to address the needs of that incident type. So that's where we have a differentiation in the number of unit responses compared to the number of incidents. 11,628 incidents resulted in 13,345 unit responses. So we can go through our stations, we see that Station 2 is the busiest, Station 3 was closely, right close behind them. Station 4, you'll see we had 2,376 incidents, but lower than that unit responses, and the reason for that is, this year, we started rolling out a new plan where if we have a call from the Kaiser Urgent Care that's right by Station 4, and it does not require a fire engine to respond with ambulance, we don't actually roll a fire engine to a medical facility that's doing a transfer of a patient. So that has brought down the unit responses out of that area. So when we look at the calls for service, we see that 71.6% of the incidents we run are medical in nature, and only about 2% are actually fires. But the emphasis we should draw to that is that those 2% of the calls are the low-risk, high-complexity calls that take a lot of training. So a lot of the training hours that we spend throughout our days and our shifts are to address those high-complexity calls that are in that 2%. In fact, the most complex calls we have are the lowest frequency, which is fires and hazmat incidents. But when we break down that big piece of the pie, that's the EMS, that requires a lot of training as well. Most of the people on our fire department are paramedics, and we're able to deliver a high level of care because of that. And then when we look at these total number of EMS incidents, we had 175 cardiac arrests, 147 strokes. And as you look, you can see that the number of medical incidents has climbed from 2015, we had 4,900 calls, to where we're at 8,405. Of those, 5,347 resulted in transport to an emergency room, and there's actually more than that. That puts us at about a 63% transport ratio for the city. We don't actually get, when we have one of those AMR transports that goes from Kaiser to the other Kaiser hospital, those aren't captured in here. If we did have those captured, that would bring us to about 75% of the EMS calls that we have in our city are transported to a hospital. What I do want to draw emphasis to, that every one of these medical calls starts with our dispatchers. Our 911 dispatchers pick up the phone when somebody calls 911, and they work them through the process, making sure that we send the right response to the medical aid. So up there, EMD triage medical incidents, 7,000. So, up there, EMD triage medical incidents, 7,717 times, when somebody called 911, they worked through a series of questions to start delivering care to people immediately and making sure we send the right response based on the medical need that they have. Up there, I would really like to draw emphasis to, we had one EMD-instructed childbirth. So, that is where a dispatcher sat on the phone and helped deliver a baby before our Fire Department got there. Eight times, we had dispatchers deliver CPR, where they were able to bring that person back to life before our firefighters got on scene. That's tremendous, and what a resource to the citizens to be able to have our dispatchers start providing medical care when they call 911. So, I wanted to make sure that we gave credit where credit is due to all of our great dispatchers in the city. Next, we want to talk about community risk reduction. There's a lot there that we do. We know our city is growing. We know we do a lot of plans checks, 1,100, over 1,100 plan checks. We know we do a lot of construction inspections, 690 inspections. Something I want to draw emphasis to, however, is the defensible space inspections. We do this better than any city I know of in this state. We did over 16,000 defensible space inspections. That's on 14,000 unique properties. And so, we, of the 14,000 properties that we are required by law to inspect in the very high fire severity zone, we had about 1,100 that weren't in compliance, and so that we had to go do re-inspects, which is why it went up to 6, over 16,000. I'm happy to say that we have fewer than 100 properties in the city that didn't come into compliance, because our community, when told what right looks like, they make it happen. So, I wanted to draw emphasis to that here as well. I want to talk about our public education. We made contact with over 11,500 people doing public education this year. We had 93 presentations in 110 hours, and this is the Fire Department-based, or I should say, the Fire Suppression Base. This is with our fire engines going out. Moving to disaster preparedness, we also have a component of disaster preparedness that works in our schools. So, we had 206 public outreach hours through our disaster preparedness. And we had two disaster exercises, two EOC activations, both of which were for weather. Usually, we have EOC activations for fire, but we did two for weather, showing that we can do it for anything. And then we also signed a mutual aid agreement with the Marietta Valley Unified School District, so we can use sheltering for theirs. So, I promised the audience that you'd be able to scan to get our whole 36-page document. You can scan that QR code and download it, so you'll be the first to be able to do that, if everybody wants to download it. I don't see any phones, so I'm going to move along. So, we're, we have, we have.
Two.
So, I do want to say that we're already planning next year's annual report, and something we really want to focus on next year in our annual report is something that has long awaited, the return of the Marietta Citizens' Fire Academy. Will be returning in May. I'm announcing it here first. So, we're excited to bring this back. More information to follow, sign up for our newsletter and for the public, sign up for our newsletter, and you can find out more about how to sign up for our academy that will be coming back. At this point, I will end, and if you have any questions.
Councilmember Holliday.
I do have one question. Could you clarify what a good-intent call is?
I mean, it classifies. So, National Fire Information Rating System, that's what we classify our calls in. Good intent would be like ringing alarms, or if we go out and do a lift assist, any sort of public contact call like that. And they're broken down. We can break that down by every individual call type, but those just get classified as good intent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Warren.
I want to say thank you, not only to your leadership, the entire department is outstanding, amazing, but for you to stand in front of all of us and say how great our dispatchers are, that says, that speaks volumes for all of our public safety. And they are the first responders so many times, and they don't often get the credit that's due, and I want to thank you and Chief. Both of you have gone out of your way many times to acknowledge our dispatchers, and I salute them as well, but thank you for bringing it to everyone's attention. I appreciate that.
Chief, fantastic report. Thank you so much to you and your entire team.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, I would like to bring up our brand-new PIO, Christina Davies.
Hello, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I'm not sure I'm going to follow Chief, because I just have what's going on in Marietta, so some fun stuff happening. So, first, I'm going to start off with some events. Of course, we have Market Nights, that's this Thursday, and as some of you have already learned, I am a meteorologist, so I put a little weather update on there for Thursday. Throughout the day, we'll see some sun and clouds, slight chance of rain in the morning, but the temperature is going to be cool out there, you know, upper 50s, will get down to probably to the mid 50s. So, grab those jackets if you are going to be headed out to Market Nights. And then, I don't want to forget that we do still have master plan workshops going on for our parks and rec master plan, as well as our trails master plan, and those are happening on March 19th and on March 28th. And this is just a chance for the community to get out, and we want to hear what you have to say about our parks as well.
What time are those?
Those will be at 6:00, and of course, I will keep everyone updated. So, we have our newsletter. This will be posted on social media, as well as on our website, no problem. And then on March 23rd, we will have our Spring Egg Stravaganza and Recreation Expo. That is, there are multiple times for the kiddos, because we have over 10,000 eggs that will be hidden to be found, well, hidden for the kiddos. So, please be sure to bring those baskets. And then a hazardous household waste collection event that is happening on March 30th, from 9:00 to 2:00, and that will be here at City Hall in the back parking lot. And of course, that too will also be on our website and social media. And for some news, we still have a couple of job openings, so be sure, if you are interested in a recreation coordinator position or a recreation leader position, you can apply on our websites. And I have the website up here, so for people who are watching online, if you're interested in a job, you can go to mariettasc.gov/jobs, or mariettasc.gov/connect if you want to stay connected with the city, get all the fun updates and times on events. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Christina. And that is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Moving on to governing body commission and board reports. The governing body reports is an opportunity for City Council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commission committees, and board meeting attendance. Reports should not exceed three minutes. And we will move on to hear from Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much. I attended the WR cog meeting yesterday, and nothing to report out except, the governor is going to repeal the REAP grant, which is about a $3 million grant, and luckily, WR cog hasn't utilized much of the grant, but it may have a slight impact. Also, there is some talk about losing money from the gas tax and how that money is going to be made up in the future, especially for future highway building. We're going to continue to discuss that. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have no updates for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle, Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Regional Conservation Authority meeting yesterday up in Riverside, and they are continuing to work on tweaks to the plan to make it viable over a longer period of time. It was never probably envisioned to go as long as it has, but it's over 20 years old, and so it needs some tweaks. Of course, working with federal agencies is a challenge, so it's going to be a longer process. And then I also attended the Southwest Riverside County Elected Leaders Collaborative Meeting, and I must give kudos to our mayor for starting that group, and it has produced so far two great things. One, Councilmember DeForest is spearheading an offshoot committee for the higher education, which was their first task, which was before my time. And then, the most recent one, which they decided to be on, the next on agenda, is traffic. And we had a great group of staff and elected leaders from all over this region, including RCTC and members representing different county agencies, had a great discussion of keeping the discussion moving forward with federal and state agencies to make sure that our traffic issues on the freeway moves smoothly. So, I thank you, Madam Mayor, for starting that.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Pro Tim Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending the RTA Commission on the 22nd, and a lot did happen at that meeting, other than they gave great cookies, I tell you, the best cookies ever. But ridership is up, and that is a really good thing, because since the pandemic, ridership has been way down, and in January, it was up 8.2% from the same time last year, and the fiscal year total ridership is up 12.6%. On, on, I can't even say the word. Equity Day success, they gave, the RTA gave out on February the 4th, 8,574 free rides. That's pretty impressive, and they will be doing that again next year. The front, and the front seat was reserved on every bus in honor of Rosa Parks' birthday, which was pretty cool. I want to highlight a hero, a young lady who has been driving a bus for less than one year. She witnessed a massive traffic accident at a nearby intersection as she waited for her customer to board. A pickup truck had plowed into a tanker truck, and both were on fire, as the drivers, as was our file, as the driver ran away. Without hesitation, Ms. Cage evacuated her bus and radio dispatched. Her quick thinking truly did save lives that day, and it was an honor to present her with a certificate, and she's just an amazing young lady. So, it's, our drivers watch out for everybody, and her quick thinking saved lives, and I just wanted to point that out. We got a program update on the GeoMicroPilot Program, and autonomous shuttles, they're looking at doing that perhaps in some certain areas in the Riverside area. On February 26th, I attended the Riverside RCTC Budget Implementation Committee meeting, and I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim Warren. With regards to my governing body announcements, as Councilmember Holliday alluded to the Southwest Elected Collaborative, I want to thank our Assistant City Manager, Kristin Crane, who attended that meeting, and I just appreciate your experience that you were able to bring forward from San Diego that will help us in Riverside, being that we're on the border of both counties. So, thank you so much. And Mr. Meiling, where are you? Thank you so much also for being present. It was a wonderful collaboration to have all five cities sitting at the table to discuss not just our freeways, but the proposed 29,000 rooftops over the next 18 years that will be implemented in the unincorporated area that's going to affect all five cities. And as you know, sometimes government works a little slow, so having these discussions today will definitely be very instrumental in how we move forward with the infrastructure as the growth happens. So, that concludes my governing body announcements, and now we're going to move on to public comments for non-agenda items. Any person may address a governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies or any other matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Requests for more time must be made by the city clerk with a timing limit to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have John Jilsing.
Good evening.
My name is John Jilsing. I was in here in August, talking about, unfortunately, she left the French Valley Airport, and I did a big handout to you guys about some of the correspondence that I've had, including with the FAA. I'll just get to the point in a hurry here. I'd like to see a reckless endangerment law passed by the city, and that's going to protect us on the ground. She was wrong about a couple of issues. Number one, planes have to be 1,000 feet. They're not. They're coming out of the French Valley Airport. I can see them from my place. I'm across from Rose Mead Park, I believe it is, on Lake Villa Aliceau, by Coal Canyon Elementary School. Two Sundays ago, I seen a plane dip down into the gully there, and I look up to the side, and there are three skydivers coming down, and I tried to wave the guy off and get him out of the way, and he continued on. Then I gave him the number-one sign, and he went between the skydivers and the ground. That wasn't bad enough. 10 minutes later, over our backyards, I was in the backyard, this guy came over at 100 foot through my neighbor's backyards and my backyard. If I would have had a brick, I would have thrown it at him. I was prepared to go down to the French Valley Airport and front this guy. Those guys are dangerous out of that airport. I'm not only saying that, my stepson is Lieutenant Colonel Nate McCallas. I ran into a commercial pilot a couple of weeks ago. He said, he called those guys, the best words he used were moronic joy riders. So, I want to get a reckless endangerment law, because this is what other cities have done. I want to know also from your city attorney, if this kind of incident happens again, what are we supposed to do about this, so we're not harassed and intimidated by these guys out of that airport? And if you want the whole history about that airport, my wife knows it to the T. Ron knows my wife pretty well. She's been up there for 35 years, knew the builder of the original airports and how it was conceived over, and that's what I wrote to you guys back in August. And otherwise than that, I'm pretty well done early. So, I'd like to see this reckless endangerment law passed, and that way we can protect everybody here on public safety. And I won't tell you about the near miss I seen on Friday. That's a whole other story for another time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phil Strenkowski.
My name is Phil Strenkowski. I want to talk about loud car mufflers in our city, I mean excessively loud car mufflers. I moved in Marietta just last, in January, and researched the town, love Marietta, until I started, I live in the Colony. My house backs up against California Oaks, and every half hour, I'm hearing cars going by, and it's, which is in violation of two separate California vehicle codes, by the way. And then you can also hear them all over the city. I'm sure some of you have heard them pulling up to intersections. So, I did a records request from City Hall, and I want to know how many citations Marietta Police Department wrote in 2023 for loud mufflers. I was surprised to find out they only wrote seven. That comes to one loud muffler citation every seven and a half weeks. If you sit on California Oaks, you can write seven citations for a loud muffler every two hours. This took an entire year. So, I took that information to Sergeant Steve Wooden, who's the traffic sergeant at the Police Department. He's a great guy. I really liked him. We talked for like about a half hour. I think he's a great asset to our city. But he told me two reasons that are difficult in enforcing loud mufflers. One is the police department here prioritizes safety-related traffic citations, and I get that, and I don't oppose that. But as a retired law enforcement officer working, let's call them, active in busy areas, communities, I know that you can have priorities and still address community of our, community, quality of life, that's the word. Thanks for the help from my chiropractor. Can I get my time back on that? Kidding. I know it can be done. I've done it, and I've worked in some very busy areas. So, I differ with the sergeant that citations can be written. But more importantly, he told me, he says, the officers don't feel comfortable going into court. into court and testifying as to what a loud and unreasonable muffler is. And testifying thousands of times in court, I get that. When a judge says, officer, what is the legal definition of loud, loud mufflers? You got to have some backup to that. So those are the two reasons that they gave me. So I disagree with the first. They, they can do two. So I went to the CHP office in Temecula, which when I was on the police department, I always used to go to them to get all the good traffic stuff. And they had it. And I spoke with an officer there, and he told me that the Temecula office gives training in streetcar racing. And what, and it's an eight-hour course. Can I take 30 seconds?
Yes.
They provide an eight-hour course where they will come out to an agency and certify officers, an eight-hour course in street racing, which includes loud mufflers. It all comes together, modified headers on engines, loud. This eight-hour course would give our officers the expertise to go into court and go, yes, Your Honor, I'm an expert.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Amy Edworth.
Good evening, Marietta City Council and community. I'm Amy Edworth, founder of Pearl Center for Creative Arts and Chief Engineer of the Marietta Train Project. And in honor of Women's History Month tonight, I'm inspired to share a tale of humor, hardship, and unyielding spirit, starring my great-grandmother Josie and her favorite horse, Doubt Me. A duo that challenged norms and raced ahead of their time, literally and figuratively. Josie's success is not just about breaking into the male-dominated world of horse racing, but a love letter, love letter to every underdog who's ever been told you can't. Born February 26, 1885, with a blend of Norwegian resilience and indigenous Mexican spirit inherited from her mother, and Scottish determination from the immigrants turned American Revolutionary War heroes on her father's side, Josie Anderson was as unstoppable as the iron horses she trained since the young age of 16. From the fields of her family farm in present-day Watts, Los Angeles, back in her younger days, it was simply called Green Valley. And her grandmother, Louisa, was known for having come to LA in the 1850s, serving as midwife to early families, and even playing unintentional hostess to Joaquin Marietta and his band of cutthroats, as attested to in her obituary. But back to Josie. She made history of her own, becoming California's first registered female horse trainer, where her victories were often met with astonishment rather than applause, and the sight of her behind the wheel of her twin six-packard pulling her big blue trailer with her favorite bay mare caused a stir at every racetrack. Why was this so astonishing, you might ask? Because she dared not just to play, but to win in a world that doubted her and her horses every step of the way. Doubt Me, her spirited horse, and notably her favorite, embodied Josie's defiance. Yet, for all their victories, Josie faced her share of challenges, navigating societal restrictions with a mix of grit and grace. From being forbidden from the paddock and coaching her jockeys, including her very own husband Frank of Danish descent from the side rails, to not being allowed in the winner's circle, and finally, the need to pin her winnings under her skirt for safekeeping. And she wasn't alone. Josie's friendship with Babe DeFries, the first female jockey and Hollywood stuntwoman, was not surprising. And one rainy holiday, Babe drove Josie home and arrived with a big white rabbit they got from alongside the road as a Christmas gift for my grandmother and her sisters. And despite personal setbacks, including a painful divorce in her 20s prior to meeting my great-grandpa Frank, and a harrowing incident at the races in Mexico that left her temporarily blinded, Josie's resilience never wavered. Her journey from the ashes of her family home in Los Angeles to the old ostrich farm turned thoroughbred farm in San Jacinto, where she raised her daughters and continued to train her iron horses, is a story of perseverance, love, and indomitable will. So let's cherish the legacy of Doubt Me and Josie, and all women who defy expectations and continue to inspire us to dream bigger, laugh louder, and soar higher. And remember, whenever you face adversity, let Doubt Me be your mantra and think of Josie and her iron horses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie McConnell.
Good evening. And I want to tell you, Amy and I did not plan this, but it is true. Her great-great-grandmother did entertain Joaquin Marietta, who was a bandit. And guess what? He's here tonight. And I just want to talk to you about Joaquin. And I have a complaint for our police department. Chief Conrad, we keep capturing this bandit who comes and steals things at our market. The kids capture him, we put him in jail, and he keeps escaping. For some reason, he keeps showing back up at our market.
Connie, I'm sorry, he's not in the audience. He's outside the foyer. Sorry, continue.
So anyway, I'm afraid that he might show up again at our market on Thursday. And we always have a contest for the kids to come capture him between the ages of eight and 18. And we've had lots of happy people do this. Lisa DeForest got to award the prize to, I think it was Katie, when she captured. She was such a cute little girl. But anyway, I just wanted to bring you information about Joaquin. He's a pretty slippery guy, and he does sneak away all the time. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Connie, the chief is in the foyer, if you want to go grab him. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Sorry. Okay, I'm so sorry. Moving on to consent calendar approval of items. The items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from the city council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting? Madam City Clerk, are there any members, oh, sorry. Nope, we're good. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item? Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We need a motion and a second. I see the motion by Councilmember DeForest, a second by Councilmember Lavelle. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. Moving on to discussion item number six, adoption of the 24 legislative platform staff. Hello, Isaac. Good evening. We're ready whenever you are, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm waiting for some of my backup from Townsend. All right. Good evening, Mayor Stone, members of the city council. My name is Isaac Bravo, management analyst in the city manager's office. I'm here accompanied tonight with Sean McReynolds and Corey Talkian from Townsend Public Affairs. Item number six on your agenda tonight is for the consideration of the adoption of the 2024 legislative platform. One of the functions of the city manager's office is oversight and coordination of the city's legislative affairs program. This means that throughout the year, the city manager's office has staff that is reviewing state and federal legislation to see how that impacts local governments and what the position is for the city of Marietta. During the year, there are several bills, both in the state and federal level, which impact local government, and there's sometimes very little timeframe for us to respond to them. That is why we're adopting the legislative platform. With that in place, the city council takes the positions on legislative platform through these general statements, and then staff uses them to assess the various legislative pieces, and to send letters of support or opposition to, with ultimately the mayor signing either for or against the legislation. In review of this proposed 2024 legislative platform, there's two changes. The first addition is the infrastructure for water districts to support them in their efforts to bring funding to their projects. And the second one is ties to the city council goal of an efficient and effective local government organization. Additionally, the changes to the platform include highlights that are concurrent with the council priorities that were established earlier in the year. These proposed additions are included in the agenda packet and in the redline version. Also this evening, related to the topic of legislation, we have here with us the representatives from Townsend Public Affairs, which is our advocacy group since 2019. We do want to highlight, since 2019, Townsend has helped the city obtain $14.3 million in both earmark and grant opportunities. Most recently, the $900,000 Public Safety Mobile Command Center, which just cleared the House, still needs to clear the Senate, but is in process of being approved. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have on the legislative platform. Otherwise, staff's recommendation is to move forward and adopt the 2024 legislative platform.
Thank you, Isaac. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Isaac. I just wanted to highlight one of the bills that's coming forward, SB 968. If you guys aren't already aware of it, it's a piece of legislation that I asked Senator Seoto's office to move forward for me. It's benefit to any city. Basically allows us, if we exceed our RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers for a particular cycle, we're allowed to carry those over to the next cycle so that if we do happen to build more than we anticipate, we don't lose those in the next cycle because we know those are a hard-fought commodity to have. So I appreciate if you take a look at that and take a stance on that and let the other cities that you represent know about that as well. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Holliday, that is a fantastic idea that you had, that you gave Senator Seoto, and I hope that it moves forward. So thank you so much for that. I'm seeing no other council members in the queue. So Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. We're bringing back for additional comments from my colleagues. Seeing none. Let's call for a motion and a second. Motion carried by Councilmember Warren, second by Councilmember Holliday. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Sean, again, congratulations. Stay in touch. Thank you, Townsend. Moving on to discussion item number seven, type one fire engine purchase. Hello, Chief. Sir?
It's a slippery thing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and council. We're here tonight to present to you agenda item number seven, the purchase of a type one fire apparatus. I'm going, with me tonight is Division Chief Dave Perez, who runs all fleet services for Marietta Fire and Rescue. I'm going to turn it over him to present the agenda report for this very important piece of apparatus.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just to give you a brief background, Marietta Fire and Rescue is seeking to purchase type one engine from South Coast Fire Equipment, Pierce Manufacturing, and the upfitting of equipment from Johnson Equipment, Motorola Radio Solutions, and Ellen and Curtis. The purchase of the type one engine is part of MFR's fleet replacement schedule to replace the 2002 type one engine that has passed its serviceability lifespan. The new type one engine is part of the approved fiscal year 2324 capital improvement project budget and capital improvement plan for fiscal years 23, 24 to 27, 28. Pierce Manufacturing was selected by our apparatus committee to ensure continuity within our fleet and to standardize all of our type one engines. This improves the efficiency of training, operations, and maintenance. MFR can purchase the type one engine through the NPP.gov government procurement contract with Pierce Manufacturing. NPP.gov is a nationwide government procurement service that allows local governments and special districts access to cooperative competitive procurement processes. Per Marietta Municipal Code 3.08.295, cooperative purchasing, the city council has the authority to join with other public agencies in cooperative purchasing programs for the purchase of equipment. The type one engine will cost 1.168, 684 million, and upfitting equipment will be approximately 230,000, therefore totaling 1.4 million. MFR is requesting to use Measure T Fire Fleet reserves to pay for the type one engine cost. The budget will need to be established for the full amount. The type one engine cost in the fiscal year is planned for delivery. The type one engine construction will take approximately 45 to 48 months to build. There's no immediate fiscal impact associated with this action, and no need to establish a budget in the current fiscal year 2324, since a purchase order will be created with zero amount. As part of the biannual budget adoption process, 1.4 million was set aside in the Marietta, or excuse, excuse me, in the Measure T Fire Fleet Replacement Reserve to pay for the replacement of the type one engine. I think we have a photo. Just want to add a little photo in there. You guys can see what 1.4 million looks like in service. So in closing, we recommend council approve Resolution 24-4726 as listed and authorize the city manager to approve the South Coast Fire Equipment Proposal and $0 purchase order to initiate the type one engine construction. And with that, we'd like to invite any questions you may have.
Seeing, oh, Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Holliday, for that. Having a little technical difficulties. Here's a question for you. Thank you for that. Pierce would be all of the type engines, so we would have continuity through, in the entire fleet of Marietta? Is that what you had said?
That's correct.
Okay. And tell me why you need $230,000 to outfit this thing? That's a lot of money. What do you put in there?
It is. So like everything that we've experienced recently, there's inflation, and the equipment is very expensive. So we're looking at everything from the hose on the engine to the rescue tools, which are extremely expensive. We've got radio equipment. We've got computers that are onboard. Everything, the packs, the breathing air packs that the firefighters wear, those are extremely expensive. So if, once you add all that equipment up, it adds up to that amount.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So one other question, and the caveat, four years to build it. Is there any fast track? Like for, for example, I know that we're talking about adding another fire station. So would we need to be thinking for the future? I know we'd like to get one fire truck, and I'm, I'm all for that, but how are we going to, if it takes four years to get a truck, how do we look to the future of outfitting our future station?
Yeah, it's certainly a challenge for all of the fire service right now because this is how long it's taking for almost all fire engine manufacturing companies to deliver engines. So we have a robust fleet reserve, and we can add additional needs with that. But we are at the point where we have to start thinking down the road for purchasing vehicles because it does take four years to receive a type one engine. For perspective, five years ago, you would order a fire engine and receive it in the same budget year. That's not the case anymore.
Well, as I recall, we ordered our ladder truck, or tiller. Am I getting the right name? Tiller?
Yes.
We ordered that, and that was a three-year build.
Three years.
So it's getting worse with time.
Correct.
It's, I have a question. Is it because of how intricate it is to build it, or is it because of the amount of purchases that are happening? I'm just curious.
I think it ties more closely to the amount of purchases that happened. There were, during COVID, a lot of the American Rescue Funds were used to purchase fire apparatus. So a lot of deferred maintenance and fleets from a lot of fire departments put in orders for apparatus. So we saw during that timeframe, the, the delivery times skyrocketed. And this is not just with Pierce. This is with every manufacturer that we looked into because we saw that timeframe and figured we needed to go out and see if it was worth looking at other apparatus. And all of the deliveries were within a few months of one another.
That was, no, that was fine. No, that was fine.
Thank you.
Thanks for caving in on that, Mayor, and thank you so much for your report. And I look forward to moving forward with another shiny red truck that takes a long time to get. I guess if it I guess if it takes, you know, a year to get a Bronco, then, you know, I'm still waiting for mine. So I guess it takes longer to get a fire truck, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Chiefs. So if we're at the end of our useful life on our current fire engine, we're going to limp it along for another four years?
Correct.
The simple, sweet answer. Correct, yeah, we're gonna make do with obsolete equipment for another four years. That's obviously not ideal.
True. Yeah, that is true. We have, we have a lot of reserves, so we do have enough reserve apparatus to keep us going, but it is true that you have to apply more maintenance to your reserves to keep them going. The good news about fire engines is effectively what they're there for is to deliver water to a fire. That technology really hasn't changed a lot in the past 20 years.
And as far as the funds for this fire engine, do we have a sinking fund? Are you budgeting a sinking fund for replacement vehicles?
We have it assigned in the capital plan.
And, but that does not include what Councilwoman DeForest mentioned about the new fire station and the new fire engine that's needed?
Not on, not for the new fire station.
So that's gotta be part of a future sinking fund for the next few budget years.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Thank you. All right. This is just a question that I've always wanted to ask. What do you do with fire trucks when you can't use them anymore? Can you sell them? Can you, I mean?
So that's, that's a very good question.
Thank you. Could you say that one more time, please?
Yeah, very good question. There are several, several options that we've seen. Some as extreme as, as a lot of agencies will send them south of the border to Mexico. There are collectors out there that will seek the old fire engines and restore them, which is, which is pretty neat when they, when they come to fruition. But nowadays, like, like Chief Malloy said, we're not seeing the sale of fire engines so much. We're seeing them, the life prolonged for the service. So I think Marietta, we have maybe sold two in the history of the department. Typically, I think our last one, we donated to the school for the fire, the fire program that they have, the youth fire program. So they do go to good use, and although we retire them here, they, they do have a second life.
Thank you so much.
Maybe the, the bus off the 215 freeway, that, yeah, there you go, maybe they'll buy it, buy it. I just have one quick question. With regards to the new unit, can you tell us, kind of backtracking on Councilmember DeForest's question, the technology compared to the last one we purchased, has it progressed?
Just to clarify, you, you asked the new unit, what kind of new technology may we see? It, quite honestly, our, our apparatus committee is, is a very, very thorough group, and I did ask that very question. You know, we see these disinflation in these units. What are we getting in return? And, and there is not much out there. I think it's, it's a bit of the inflation that we're seeing, and the supply and demand, I have to think, has a huge impact on, on the prices we're seeing right now. But all in all, it's, it's not, we're not gonna see major innovation in the new, new unit. And out of fairness, our fleet is relatively new in itself, so you're, you're not really, there's not much wiggle room to compare when you look at our current fleet now.
Okay, great. All right. Chief Perez, you know, thank you so much for your great presentation. It's very appreciated. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item? Great. Any additional council comments? Mayor Pro Tem, is that, are you back in the queue again? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Seeing no other discussions, let's call for a motion and a second, please. I see a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Warren, a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you again, Chief and Chief. All right, moving on to item number eight, the fiscal year 2023, 2024, second quarter financial status reports. Thank you, staff.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of City Council. My name is Jennifer Terry, the Finance Manager, and with me tonight is Giovanni Calvopina, Financial Analyst, and tonight we'll be presenting the second quarter budget update. This is the first year of our two-year or biannual budget. Tonight, we'll, we'll be presenting some, an overview of personnel changes that are for your consideration. Year-to-date revenues and expenditures through December 31st. We're looking to appropriate Measure T funds from the reserve, repair reserves for a CIP project that was previously approved, and then we'll provide an update on future financial updates. There are proposed edits to the schedule of authorized positions for your consideration. The net change for fiscal year 24 is the addition of one and a half positions, and for next fiscal year, there's a net reduction of one half of a position. So a net change in total of one new position over the course of two years. This will bring our full-time equivalent positions in fiscal year 25 to 477.09 positions. Any fiscal impact to this year's budget associated with these positions will be included in the third quarter budget update. This slide combines the fiscal year 24 revenues and expenditures through second quarter. Through December 31st, our revenues, we've collected 58 point, approximately 58.5 million dollars in revenue, or 32% of the budget. And on expenditures, we've spent approximately 79.1 million dollars, or 42% of the budget. You'll see the contribution to or use of fund balance at the end. That is across all depart, all funds citywide, not just one, one fund. Now I'll turn the presentation over to Giovanni, so he can go over the status, the status of the revenue and expenditures in more detail.
Thank you, Jennifer. The second quarter budget update will be presented from a citywide perspective, covering the period of July to December 2023, rather than just focusing on the major funds. However, a summary of the five major funds, the General Fund, Measure T, Fire District, Community Service District, and the Library, can be found in Attachment 1. And information by individual or general ledger account can be found in Attachment 2 of the agenda report. During the second quarter, the city collected 32% of its anticipated revenues, and it is important to note that most revenues aren't collected evenly throughout the year, including property taxes, vehicle licensing fees, franchise taxes, and special taxes and assessments, most of which are received after the second quarter of the fiscal year. Sales taxes are on a two-month delay, and this table represents collections for only the months of July through October. One of the most important sources of revenue for the city is sales tax. This slide combines a collection of regular, of the regular allocation of sales tax for July through December over four years, separating the Bradley Burns and Measure T, which is the voter-approved 1% sales tax, to show their trends independently. The previous slides reflects four months' worth of sales tax revenue collected versus the current graph reflects six months' worth of sales tax receipts. Sales tax receipts for Bradley Burns have decreased by 3% compared to the same period last year, and Measure T sales tax receipts have decreased by 1%. Combined, receipts reflect 47% of the budgeted sales tax through the second quarter. This table depicts the city's other consistent revenue sources and their respective budgets, budget to actual amounts. The city collected 8.8 million dollars in property taxes, which is 7% higher than the previous year. This increase is consistent with the ad valorem tax and the number of homes added to the market, indicating that there has been no significant change in the value of homes. Charges for services are a type of revenue that the city receives to recover some of the costs for services that it, that it provides, such as plan checks, inspection services, and internal administrative charges for internal service funds. The amount of 7.7 million is an 11% increase over the prior year, mainly due to increased in internal, internal administrative charges for risk and IT. Other miscellaneous revenues consist mainly of developer impact fees, federal and state reimbursements, and other revenues such as interest earnings. This category's revenues increased by 5.5% compared to the previous year, totaling 8.18.8 million through December, making it the second-largest collected revenue source. Now we'll move on to expenditures. As of December 31st, we have expended 42% of the budget. Personnel costs being the most significant cost driver for the city currently reflects several unfilled positions. Certain operations and maintenance costs are delayed due to the timing of certain expenditures that don't occur regularly or are scheduled to take place at a later time. For this period, there's a delay in posting of long-term service debt payments worth 2.3 million. These payments were posted after we compiled the information for this report, and once posted, they will increase the percentages to 48% for this category. Currently, capital outlay is at 24%, and allocations are at 50%, which is expected at the mid-year mark. And I will turn the presentation back to Jennifer.
Thank you. As you could see in the revenue slides, we are seeing our revenues slightly below what we projected. We are looking to bring forward during third quarter some revenue adjustments so that they are in line with what our, what we're seeing, our, our actual receipts as. In addition to the revenue adjustments, we, we plan to do some budget reductions to soften that, that delta. This slide represents our current operating and sustainability reserves. The, the operating reserves were calculated when the budget was adopted last June, and they have not been adjusted based on the mid-year, or based on any adjustments that we've had. The sustainability reserves represents a variety of reserves set aside for specific purposes. The city council previously authorized reserve purpose and amounts, which can only be put into place with city council authorization. So tonight, staff is asking to appropriate $83,000 in Measure T Facility Repair Reserve for a previously approved CIP project at the Police Department. The amount here shown, highlighted, is $533,000. During a prior action, $450,000 was appropriated, so the remaining 83 is what we're asking for tonight. So total appropriation, use of reserves since the beginning of the fiscal year for Measure T is 533,000. Our new adjusted ending balance for all sustainability and operating reserves is approximately $79 million. This slide represents our five, a summary of our five major funds, with General Fund, Measure T, the Fire District, CSD, and Library. It shows the estimated beginning balance, where we started the year, July 1st. It shows our amended revenues, transfers, proposed expenditures, and transfers out, as well as capital outlay that's budgeted separately, and any use of reserves or the previously approved transfers to reserves. So this reflects an unassigned fund balance for Measure T of 15.9 million. I'm sorry, that was General Fund. Measure T is 3 million. Both of these numbers will be modified during third quarter, when we bring those budget adjustments, reducing revenue and adjusting the expenditures. So I just wanted to point that out. Fire District, CSD, and Library, those three funds will be trued up at year-end, so their balance is net to zero. Future finance updates, in April, we'll be bringing the completed annual comprehensive financial report and the single, single audit report for, for your review. April will bring the third quarter budget update, which will include those adjustments we've mentioned. And then December will be our year-end report, wrapping up our fourth quarter budget update. The recommended actions tonight are to accept and file the report, establish the appropriation of the Measure T Facility Repair Reserve of $83,000, and approve the updated schedule of authorized positions. And this concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you, Jennifer and Giovanni, for a, for a great report. Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent and in-depth report. I appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions for you. As a business owner, sales tax, if you're in the quarterly system, it was due on January 31st into the county, or into the state of California. The trickle-down effect is probably why we haven't been paid, but what is the usual pay schedule for them to reimburse, or to pay the city what is due, our portion of our sales tax? How long does that take usually?
We're on a two-month delay. So we are in, well, our last receipt in February was for December.
Was, okay.
So it's always two months after the fact.
Okay, so you should be receiving something?
We normally get them around the middle of the month.
Month, okay.
So March, middle of this month, we'll, we will, we will receive January.
January, okay. And then my next question is, what do you do to contribute to sales tax being lower than anticipated? Is there a trend that you're seeing? Or is there, what is, do you have anything you can, you know, contribute that to?
I, I think it's just a slowing of the economy. We, the, the higher inflation is still an issue. The higher interest rates are impacting the auto sales because auto loans are, are more expensive. In, in October, student loans became due, so less disposable income. So I think it's just a factor, a, a variety of factors. The economy as a whole, or the, the state as a whole, is slowing down a little bit. When we met with our sales tax consultant, the county and state were comparable, a little bit worse, but comparable to, to our slowdown as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Warren. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great presentation to you both. Jennifer, always appreciate your expertise and the job you do for our Finance Department. I know Javier appreciates you as well. Couple of questions. With the adjustments that you're doing, we're still maintaining our 30% reserve allocation?
The reserves are, we haven't touched the reserves. So when we bring back the third quarter with the proposed adjustments, we will calculate what that reserve is at, at that point. But knowing what, and we can, we can ask you if you want to maintain that 30% and how much it would cost, so we can include that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then if we could go back to the slide on the Bradley Burns versus Measure T? And then if we could go back to the slide on the Bradley Burns versus Measure T. So I had a question. So these are sales tax receipts both, correct?
Yes.
On the same exact sales?
Not, yes and no.
Okay, give me the no.
So with, like, for and and a vehicle that you purchase out of the city, we receive those, those sales tax back to the city. So even though you're, you go down to San Diego and you buy a vehicle, we are still going to get the Measure T portion back. The, San Diego will keep the Bradley Burns portion, but we get the Measure T back.
So we only get the one percent on purchases outside of the city because of where their address is that they're purchasing it? But we don't get any share of the rest? I thought we got, I thought we got this, our share of the rest as well. Oh, sorry.
Call in reinforcements.
Mr. Carcamo.
Yeah, so the, on the sale of vehicles, we only get the one percent district sales tax when it's been purchased outside the city. When we purchase a vehicle within our city, we get both the Bradley Burns and the district sales tax.
Okay. And is that true for other types of purchases outside the city as well?
No, that is not correct. So any other purchases outside, go to Temecula and buy a cellphone, they get the Bradley Burns. And if they do have a district sales tax, they keep that.
It all goes outside of our area.
That's correct.
So that's why the difference between the three percent hit in the Bradley Burns and the one percent hit Measure T is because we're still getting Measure T from some purchases that we aren't getting Bradley Burns for.
That is correct.
That's a pretty good chunk of vehicle sales outside of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Jennifer, I agree with you with the slowing of the economy and the high interest rates, student loans, potential property taxes that are going to affect us. I, I truly believe that the economy is going to continue to slow down. And and sadly, we're going to have to buckle up, put our seatbelts on, and just like, if I, if I don't have enough money, I've got to make some changes. And in the next quarter, it's going to be very interesting to see what our financials look like. So again, I just want to thank you and Giovanni for a great report. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeForest, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I just want to know everyone in Finance, his name starts with a J, so since I'm all L's, I appreciate that. So welcome, Giovanni, right? And thank you, it was nice to see you. Or do you start with a G? Are you a G? Wow. I've just changed your name spelling, okay? Tonight, you're a J. So thank you, Giovanni. All right, well, that didn't work out well, did it? All right. I just have a question now on capital outlay. We're down, we're only at twenty-four percent. If you go back to the one slide, your twenty-four percent are mid-year. Is that normal for mid-year for capital outlay, or?
It is, because there, we don't, if it's for a capital, a large purchase, we're not making one twelfth of the purchase every month. It's one lump sum. So if projects haven't fully gotten, you know, they haven't got their POs processed or they're waiting on the vendor, some things will come in later in the, in the fiscal year.
Okay.
So it is, it is very common for capital outlay to fluctuate one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you. And noticing that we do have a little bit of a trend down with our income tax, or with our sales tax, but we also have an increase in property tax. So that's, that's a super positive trend.
Yes, property tax is, is, is strong. We're not seeing property values reducing, and as homes continue to sell, existing homes continue to sell, then those, that sets the bar for the new selling price. So we're not, we have no concern with property tax at this time.
All right. And I do appreciate our conservative approach, and thank you for maintaining that conservative approach, even though our city is in a great financial position, and I really appreciate your help, helping us understand exactly what's going on in this budget. So I think it's very important, but I do appreciate that we are a very strong, financially stable city. So thank you so much.
Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Any additional comments or for discussion for my colleagues? Seeing none. Let's call for a motion in a second, please. See a motion from Councilmember Holliday, second from Mayor Pro Tem Warren. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item number nine, consideration of a resolution supporting the need for expanded public higher education institutions within Southwest Riverside County. Staff? Hello, Assistant City Manager Kristin Crane.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Stone and members of the City Council. I will be presenting this evening on item nine in coordination with Councilmember Dr. Lisa DeForest. So to start with, providing some background information about this item. Over the years, there has been a lot of discussion among the local Southwest Riverside County elected officials, as well as representatives from Mount San Jacinto College and Cal State University San Marcos, about the need for expansion of higher education opportunities in Southwest Riverside County. Some of the discussions occurred more recently during 2022 and 2023, growing out of the Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative, formerly known as the Southwest Women Elected Leaders Collaborative. And presently, there's the four-year public university that serves this area is Cal State San Marcos, and its territory actually extends as far north as Corona to Moreno Valley and southward. So it's a pretty large area. For approximately fifteen years, Cal State San Marcos has had a presence in Temecula, their Temecula Valley campus. It's, they have, are using buildings that are owned by Temecula Valley Unified School District. And this satellite campus presently offers a range of programs. One example is a nursing program that is in partnership with the local hospitals where they're offering clinical rotations for the individuals as they're training. There are also a business administration program and a computer science program. Mount San Jacinto College, which is the community college district that serves this area, and Cal State San Marcos have forged a really strong relationship. They work closely to facilitate the Mount San Jacinto students transitioning into Cal State San Marcos when they're ready to move beyond, to continue their studies beyond the community college. And there's a further opportunity for expansion for Cal State San Marcos to have a stronger presence there, using the second tower that Mount San Jacinto College has at the Temecula Valley Campus near Abbott Laboratories, or excuse me, in the former buildings that were housing Abbott Laboratories. The necessary tenant improvements for that expansion is estimated to cost about eleven million dollars. So as I mentioned before, there have been a number of conversations that have been happening on this topic. And in recent months, in November 2023, Councilmember DeForest, along with Menifee Councilmember Lisa Sobek, hosted a, a meeting, and also including San Marcos staff, as well as the Mount San Jacinto College staff. They invited local government representatives from this broader region, again, all the way up to Corona, Moreno Valley, and southward, Water District Representatives, School Board Members, Chambers of Commerce, and other civic organizations to learn more about this issue that affects the whole region. There were about thirty-one people that attended that meeting. And then subsequently, there have been meetings in January and February of this year, and the group has now identified a leadership team and also several working groups that are working on specific tasks. And they're specifically aiming to engage other stakeholders that have a vested interest in higher education. They're working to raise money to fund the cost of the tenant improvements, and also then advocating on the need for a longer-term solution, a four-year university that would serve this geographic area. So related to those needs, the group has been advocating that due to the explosive population growth in this area for all of the communities, as well as the unincorporated area, there really is a tremendous need to have more of a higher education presence in this area. It's good for the economy as well, and also taking into consideration the long commute times that the students are experiencing going from this area to Cal State San Marcos in the neighborhood of, could be an hour and a half to two hours, is some of what has been said anecdotally. So Councilmembers DeForest and Menifee Councilmember Sobek are presently co-chairing this effort, and they, Southwest Higher Education Coalition is what they're calling themselves, is mobilizing to advocate on this topic. And all of the stakeholder organizations that have been involved have been asked to consider adopting a resolution of support of the coalition's efforts and to help advance Mount San Jacinto's College's partnership with San Marcos. So far, the resolutions have been adopted by Hemet, Canyon Lake, and Wildemar, so Marietta would be the fourth, and it's forthcoming at the other cities as well. And by signing onto the resolution, it's meant to show a sign of support, so that as the group is going forward and talking with state representatives, federal representatives, county representatives, they're showing a broad continuum of support from all of the different stakeholders. There is not a financial contribution from our city that's being sought at this time. The group is working to try to seek grant funding, as well as financial contributions from potentially stakeholders like the medical industry or other industry groups, as well as state and federal funding, and private donations as well. So with that overview, I would like to pass it over to Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you. Kristin, what a wonderful overview that you did for us to kind of give a caveat on why this is going. And I, like you said before, this did springboard from Mayor Stone's Women's Coalition, something I've been working on individually, working with Mount San Jacinto, as well as talking with our wonderful Cal State San Marcos for several years, being a professor there for years. It was so nice to be able to join with fellow colleague Lisa Sobek to push this forward and hopefully to fruition. Our two goals, like you spoke before, are higher ed in the region, to stop the high dropout rate of these kids trying to commute for two hours, like you mentioned, and to stop the brain drain in our region. So as we are a fast-growing region, we do not have a four-year education option, and we do have thirty-five thousand square foot available on one floor at the Mount San Jacinto College facility in Temecula. So that's where we're starting. First goal, one, is to raise eleven million dollars to put in the first aspect of Mount San Jacinto collaboration with San Marcos, and then expand that. Now, yes, we would like to see it expand and for that thirty-five thousand square foot to turn into education for a four-year campus, but we also are pushing for this region for a four-year university. We have UCR, and we have CBU, and Cal State San Marcos, that's all a two-hour drive for our kids. So, and we already know Marietta has some of the best school districts in the region, as well as Temecula and Menifee and our surrounding regions. So we have great education here, but we need to take that to a secondary level. So I ask my colleagues if you would please support this and move it forward, so we can have a collaboration regionally of higher education. So thank you for listening to us for a lot on education. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Kristin Crane and Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great job on that synopsis from both of you. I've been attending those meetings as well, and at the last meeting, one of the things that Councilmember DeForest didn't highlight that I think is important is Cal State San Marcos's nursing program, which provides a lot of our nursing staff, which we're understaffed here in this area, is in a facility that the lease should have expired and that they've extended it several times. And at any point in time, the owner of that building could say, yeah, we're not extending it anymore, and they would be without a facility. So a chunk of that eleven million dollars is to replicate all the required equipment for a nursing facility. It's not just classrooms and desks and that kind of stuff. And we need, they, they turn away nurses every single semester because they do not have the capacity to train all the nurses, and we're, and we have a shortage. So it's a win-win. Appreciate all the efforts that you've done towards this, and I encourage my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Any other council members for questions? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, bringing it back up for last-minute discussion, seeing none. We have a motion from Councilmember DeForest and a second from Mayor Pro Tem. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to governing body announcements. The governing body announcements is the opportunity for the City Council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. The City Clerk will use the computerized timer. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. You can review my governing board announcements online. Just to highlight, on February twenty-second, attended the Southwest Riverside Community Associate Leaders Breakfast, and it was wonderful to see our Assistant City Manager, Ivan Holler, giving the presentation. So congratulations, it was a wonderful morning. And moving on, we did have a wonderful meeting of Southwestern Riverside County Higher Education, and I was honored to come speak about it at our sister city, Canyon Lake. So a lot of fun there. So thank you so much. And if you need to reach me, my number is always online, and if you want faster service, shoot me a text. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember LaBelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I got to attend the grand reopening of Brookdale Assisted Living in Marietta. When I moved here twenty years ago, that place was there, and it's, it's really cool to see that they have now reinvested, reinvigorated their presence in the community. You know, touring the facility with Councilmember Holliday and, and Stone, I, I saw Ron eyeball a couple of those double-room suites. And I knew his window was shopping, but, no, it was good. If you haven't been there, they did a great job with the revamping of the place, and I know the residents are going to benefit for many more years to come. And then I attended the Southwest Riverside County Association Breakfast as well, and got to hear our Assistant City Manager, Ivan, speak. And he was so good, I forgot any other cities that were there. So, well done, sir. And I also attended the MTG, the Marietta-Temecula Group, and got to listen to Chad Bianco speak on some, a couple items, but, you know, legislative challenges and challenges he's, he's facing with law enforcement here. And it was, it was always good to get an update from him and good to see him there. And then lastly, I attended the Medical Leaders Luncheon at Rancho Springs Hospital. They gave some great updates on some UHS infrastructure development with the Inland Valley expansion for the hospital off of fifteen. Rancho Springs has got some development going on, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember LaBelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My previous councilmembers covered two things I wanted to highlight of my governing body announcements, but I will say kudos to our Assistant City Manager, Ivan Holler. It was a very well-done event. And unlike Councilmember LaBelle, there's a particular city I'd like to forget that I presented there. And the Medical Leaders Luncheon, Mr. Agajanian and Mr. Ellis, I thank you for putting that on. I'm always impressed by the networking and collaboration that's done at that event. It's a great boost to the healthcare industry in our city. So good job, gentlemen. Thank you. And unlike Councilmember DeForest, my email is the best way to contact me, and it is on my governing body announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Thank you. I thought Councilmember LaBelle was going to say you guys were looking for a room for me. I'm glad he did not say that. So I had the honor of also attending the breakfast, and you hit it out of the park, sir. Mr. Ivan, you did an excellent job, and I don't know who else was there either. So, you know, you were just, you mesmerized me. Great job. On the twenty-third, it was a busy weekend. Um, on the twenty-third, it was a busy weekend, that weekend. On the twenty-third, I attended Rock Your Red Heart and Stroke Awareness. And as you can see, Ron is stylishly fashionista with his red, uh, I don't know what that was scarf. Um, but, you know, there are some signs of what a stroke is and signs of a heart attack. This will be put up on the website. Um, and, you know, know, know the signs because, you know, it can save a life. And if you are not CP, CPR-trained, please get trained. It is imperative that everybody know that, how to do that. Um, I also, on the twenty-fourth, uh, back at Pachanga three days in a row, um, I attended the Good Neighborhood Healthcare Update and Appreciation Brunch, um, where they bring healthcare to the disadvantage, and it's a wonderful program. So I was honored to be there. And then last but not least, I attended the Knowles Ladies Society Luncheon along with our amazing Mr. Brian Ambrose, who did a fabulous presentation on his department and CFD, and the ladies loved him. So, uh, he did a great job. And I do believe you have many more now attending the senior center because of his presentation. So it's a win-win all the way around. So thank you so much. Uh, you can read, everybody has my number. Everybody has my email because you call me or email me constantly. So that's great. I love it. Keep doing it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Appreciate it very much. With regards to my governing body announcements, you can review them on the website. I attended probably all the events that everybody else did. Great job, Assistant City Manager Holler. Just very, very impressed. Scott, Patrick, I, one of my very favorite events is the Medical Leaders Luncheon. I have to tell you, I love the collaboration and networking. It's just an amazing, amazing event. So congratulations. And the only other thing that I'm going to announce is I want to thank Christina for assisting me. Care Solis came and we did a, uh, video of Women's History Month, which should be presented, I think, on our website sometime this month, and it really turned out fantastic. So thank you so much for your support. Okay, moving on to Councilmember request to add an item to future agendas. Now is the time for Councilmembers to request to add an item to future agendas. There's no discussion on the request, and a brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the item being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues? And before I ask that, um, I, I have an announcement. During the February sixth meeting, I requested to discuss a Day in Her Shoes event during the March fifth City Council meeting, and I am formally withdrawing that request, Madam City Clerk. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues for a future agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on. As part, as the parting thought to tonight's meeting, I like to share the following quote. "Five for the things that you care about, but do in a way that will lead others to join you." And this is by Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Without any further business, this meeting is now adjourned.